Okay, we're gonna start the. We're gonna start the Malibu Joint, well, sort of City Council Planning Commission's special meeting tonight, though we do not have a quorum of the city council. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Jennings? Commissioner Yurin?
Here.
Vice Chair Marx?
He's running late.
He's running late, okay. Chair Pearson?
Here.
You have a quorum of the planning commission?
Okay, Pledge of Allegiance, Laura, would you read us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Nick, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands, one nation, unreguired, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. The agenda is approved, can I have a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on June 2nd, 2017.
Thank you very much for that. We're gonna get right to a new business, item 1A, the proposed Dark Sky Ordinance Workshop. How are we going to start this, is there gonna be a staff report? Okay. It's a different agenda than normal. Do we, do we want to allow the public to speak first, or are we gonna have the, or do save that for after the staff report? Okay, thank you. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, and thank you everyone for coming tonight to the second part of the Dark Skies Ordinance. Last night, the city held a Dark Sky tour featuring seven locations throughout the city. The tour was led by James Benya, the principal illuminating engineer and lighting designer for Benya Burnett Consultancy, and Pete Strasser, technical director for the International Dark Skies Association. Pete and Jim are back with us tonight to discuss some of the specifics about Dark Skies ordinance, including the benefits of the ordinance and how it complies with other state regulations. After their presentation, staff will summarize the night's tour and discuss the city's draft ordinance. Jim and Pete, you guys ready?
Gentlemen, thank you, and I wanna thank everyone that went on the tour last night, I found it very educational, went quite late, but illuminating, very well done Laura, and thank these two for leading the tour, I definitely learned a lot, and I know it was a late night, so thank you very much.
Okay, pleasure to be in front of the distinguished members again. Last night, we had some really good discussions, and through some of the conversations I had, there was some, still some misunderstanding or confusion as far as what exactly are we trying to prevent, what precisely is the problem with the 3,000 Kelvin versus others, and we had some requests for some graphic representation of the difference between different lighting types and others.
Excuse me, could you just move the microphone so it's, yeah, a little straighter, that's better, yeah.
Can you get a little shorter?
No, I don't want you to stoop over, it's just if you put it straighter, it'll be, it's easier, thank you.
We'll try this, okay. We're with the, I'm with the International Dark Sky Association, just for your own edification, we promote quality lighting, application design, save energy, save money, and save the nighttime sky. It's a very simple concept, but it's not widely understood, but we're making progress, and I hope Malibu joins the team and joins all the municipalities in the world that do indeed have ordinances. The basics of lighting, the fundamental, the task is light when you need it, where you need it, and the amount necessary, and no more, all else is waste. It's a waste of resources, waste of money, there's simply no reason to have light where you don't need it. In this particular illustration here, this was the cover of National Geographic, all three fundamentals are ignored there, light where, when, and the amount necessary, that's Chicago, poster child of what not to do with lighting. The curious thing about that illustration there, that photograph, is the bright lines between the major streets are not the streets, they're the alleys. And, okay, that's interesting, why are the alleys lighted? And the alleys were put, are lighted, to an incredible degree because the thought was it would deter crime, and we know how effective that has been. We've also seen this picture, kind of an elaboration of the one that Jim had last night, it's very pretty, it's fascinating to look at, it's, my gosh, I can see my city from here, sort of thing, but what you're looking at is light shining upward, that's waste, okay? That is light that is directed towards a satellite, well away from the task of lighting a street or something of that nature. So, yeah, it's an interesting thing to ponder, but again, we're looking at complete waste. There's a fundamental about the Dark Sky Association, our name says Dark Sky, doesn't say dark ground, there's an often misunderstanding that to have a dark sky means you can't have a well-lighted area, and that's simply not the case. I'm gonna show you some examples of things to avoid, certainly don't wanna have that happen, have them happen in, in your area, and that there are good solutions to the issue. Okay, this is kind of, I tried to find an illustration I had of one of the gas stations we saw last night. Why is that so bright? This particular one is measured 116-foot candles, which is crazy, there is no reason for it to be that bright, especially when the IAS recommendation is five, and this is outside of, this is a community in Paris, Tennessee, where this is. It completely destroys your adaptation, you drive up there, your eyes are assaulted by the light, and think about it, your eyes, it's so bright that your pupils will constrict, and that's kind of a crazy thing to do at night, you shouldn't, you shouldn't have so much light that your eyes are responding by saying this is too much, but there it is. And like the gas station we see there, and the one that we drove by last night, you could do that. That is a retrofit of a light installation in Tucson where they had bad lights, and now they have very good lights. There's minimal glare, you can see what you need to see, you can also see the light in the background, is also the, more glaring than the lights up close, because there's better design associated with these retrofit luminaires. That sort of thing can happen with the filling stations that we see in the area, so alternatives certainly do exist for retrofitting existing luminaires in gas stations. There was questions about what is, what's the difference between 3,000 Kelvin and 4,000 Kelvin products? This particular photograph I took in Anchorage when there was a test going on, the light closest to us is a 3,000 Kelvin product, the middle one is a high-pressure sodium which you're used to, and the ones in the distance are very blue and very glaring, and those are 4,000 Kelvin. The people on the street where this was taken described living under the 4,000 Kelvin as living under an arc welder. It's that harsh, it's that piercing glare that's associated with the amount of blue light that's seen in those, the 4,000 Kelvin products. And there are 4,000 Kelvin products outside in the community right now, 3,000 Kelvin is the absolute recommendation for the maximum that we recommend, and you can see just in the foreground, the light is so much more pleasing than the light towards the, at the end of the street. Why 3,000 Kelvin? It's more than just an aesthetic, there's a medical reason for doing it too, and the American Medical Association, last year, very close to the anniversary, June 14th of last year, put out a recommendation that 3,000 Kelvin be the maximum correlated color temperature for lighting. Case, the reason being is because the amount of blue light associated with these LEDs is minimized compared to the older, colder temperatures of 4,000 and 5,000 Kelvin. It was a, quite a vote, 535 physicians voted unanimously that this be, they adopt this, there's no hesitation, they said it's clearly an issue for human health, it's clearly an issue for the nocturnal environment, and it makes streets unsafe because of the glare associated with the colder products. So it's, it's not to be taken lightly, there has been some backlash primarily from the lighting industry, but I'm far more believe that I should listen to the health implications of physicians as opposed to a lighting engineer. People are listening too, and we're seeing a lot more 3,000 Kelvin being put into use globally. This is a kind of a technical slide here, I know the mayor peek asked that we show a diagram showing the different spectral output of different Kelvin temperature products. All high-brightness white LEDs are in fact a blue LED with a phosphor coating on it, the magic happens with the phosphor. When the light shines through it, you'll often see a white LED, actually it looks like a yellow chip because that's the color of the phosphor, but it, a reaction happens and different spectra of light are emitted from that activated phosphor from the blue LED. The types of phosphors that are on there then give us different spectrum associated with it. When you look at the blue line there, the 5,000 and above, a huge peak and not much of the other colors that we see, the 5,000 is the green line, as we go to the warmer temperatures, you'll see far more other portions of the lighting spectrum produced from a warmer LED product. There's still blue light, there's no going around it, we can't get rid of it, there's going to be some, but for the human visual response, a little bit of blue goes a long way, because our eyes are most sensitive to blue light, and a little bit of blue makes a vast difference in the, our perception and the color rendering that Jim spoke of last night. So that little bit of blue in there makes the light appear nice and white. Compare that with the high-pressure sodium, that's, it's not a smooth curve, those are sharp peaks, because there's different phosphors that are used in those particular lamps, and you'll see the predominantly yellow to orange, which is what we associate with high-pressure sodium. There's still a little bit of blue in there, but not as much, if there were a more blue in that, it would look whiter. So that's just a kind of a comparison between the spectra of the sources that are common now. Another technical slide there is, it's called Rayleigh scattering, Rayleigh scattering is what causes sky glow, it's what causes the atmosphere to have sort of an opaque appearance to it when light is shining on it. The thing about it is it's a, mathematically, an inverse fourth order increase in the amount of scattering with the shorter wavelengths of light. If you double the amount of blue light, it increases scattering 16 times, so the shorter the wavelength light is far more causative to sky glow, so it might be just a little bit reduction compared to 4,000, but it's profound in how it affects sky glow. The ability of LEDs, though, for control is part of the promise of the technology as opposed to the peril we see with using the wrong ones. The control capabilities weren't available with the older technology, you can have lower lighting levels when not needed with the ability to dim, which allows curfews, instead of turning lights off completely, you can have dimming. There's also the notion of dimming when the moon is bright, in some of the smaller zones that we're talking about, where like Zone 1, you can actually dim the light down because the moonlight is providing adequate illumination, and there are ability to control that with the different types of sensors and timers that are used with the luminaires. Motion sensing, high to low level rapidly, or it could be ramped up in a more gradual manner. Again, that hasn't been available in the past, it can now with the, the new technology. The tactical advantage in security situations, police officers responding to a call can have the ability as an app on their phone to turn lights off, to dim lights, to flashlights, to essentially take control of the situation, if they know there's a criminal they're trying, trying to hide, or evade, or coming at them, they can actually manipulate the lights around them by having different apps and different ability to control, those weren't available, and it's simply done with a cellphone, you can have that kind of capability. And with all these abilities to control, you can have a substantial energy reduction, so it's not merely for control for control's sake, but there is a fiscal benefit as well. I heard people ask, we need the lights for safety for some of the installations, and that's certainly not the case, that more light means more safe. In this particular place, this is actually one of the streets in Chicago, there initially one light, and then two, then three, now there's four lights within a 20-foot area under the guise that more light is more safe, and that's certainly not the case. We've heard the term lurking in the shadows, well, supposedly through adding more light and make things more safe, we have created the deep shadows in which criminals can lurk. So what was supposed to be a safe installation has gone the other way around, it's, that is not a good lighting application. I call this interrogation lighting, where you have one big light shining down on an area, is, that, this is a dining area in, in Germany that's essentially vacant, whereas across the street, there's nice lighting and it's packed, and why is that light there? You know, say, oh, we do that for safety. Okay, you really don't need that, it's, it's not the way to do, do a safe installation. This is kind of an interesting slide, that is of a bank, and the light there is shining on an ATM machine. So anybody who's been on stage, or has been in television, what do you see when you're on stage? Nothing, you see bright light, and that's the very thing that the person standing at that ATM machine would turn around and see, absolutely nothing except a glaring light. So that's not safe, that's vulnerable, that's exposed. I mean, a criminal could be on the other side of the parking lot there, they can not only see your ATM code, but they can count the serial numbers on the twenties that you took out, it's so bright, and that was put in because it was deemed safe. And there's an installation that we have in Tucson, that's a far safer installation, the lights are shining down, there's no hideous glare, and it's very even, so that's actually.
One second, just wanted to indicate for the record that Commissioner Marx is now in attendance.
This is a slide that kind of takes into account of what we saw in the Ralph's parking lot last night, the problem associated with the lighting and trees. This is on a college campus where there was an assault, and there were lights initially there, but they weren't bright enough, so they put in these pole lights ostensibly to make it a more safe condition. You see the girl standing on the pathway there, and now you don't, but she's standing right underneath the pole to the right. So by adding light under the guise that it's a better installation for safety, has actually made the condition worse. So how we light, and where we put the light, and associated with the environment around it is just as important, and that needs to be taken into consideration. In Tucson, we have new LED lights, they are 3,000 Kelvin, we opted to make sure that the lights we put in have the ability to be shielded, that is not a common thing, it is by no means, you'll find every product has the ability to be shielded, these do, so they're put in, and if somebody calls and says, yeah, that's, that light is pretty glaring, they can put a shield on and block the direct view to the property. Another thing that Tucson has done, when they shifted from the 3,000, the high-pressure sodium to 3,000 Kelvin, is they also lowered the illuminance to just 40% of what the high-pressure sodium was. So we have a 60% reduction in output right away, and people did not notice. The reason being is because that little bit of blue light that's in there went a long way, and people look around and say, this looks perfectly bright, I can see just fine. So we had a drop of 60% just from standard operation, and they have a curfew, where around 11 o'clock, they're dimmed another 10%, and there haven't been any complaints as far as the streets being changed, or it's now too dark. We will hear talking about new fixtures that will be needed for the lighting ordinance, and where to find those, commercially, if you come to our website, we have 66 lighting companies involved, what we call our fixture sealed approval, and there are residential lights as well. So we can, it's a very good resource for finding fixtures for your home that will indeed be dark sky friendly and meet the indeed be dark sky friendly and meet the specifications of the ordinance that we're working on. Turn over to Jim.
I think Jessica's, are you not?
No.
Yep, got a little bit more yet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. We decided to do this, us two and then you guys. Yeah. Thank you for the opportunity to be here again and to add a few comments. We, by the way, I'm, I'm retired now from the board of the International Dark Sky Association, on which I served for 14 or 15 years. But I'm still a avid supporter of it and its principles. And I love working with Pete and that's, we're here together, helping you with this program. I just want to add a few points that are salient to your exact program as it stands today. We've been working with staff and today we put some finishing touches on a few things. There are a couple of other things I want to tell you about. This kind of picks up where I left off last night, but I'll, I'll lay it out for you. The California Code of Regulations, Title 24 establishes regulations for outdoor lighting. When I came before you in 2012, that wasn't really the case. Sort of was, but it was still growing. Today, Title 24's Part One establishes these regulations and every community in California is now regulated by these through Title 24, which is a state building code. Title 24 Part Six is the energy code. And it limits the amount of light we can use by literally limiting the wattage of light that we can use. And it's designed very specifically now to affect LED lighting in particular. It's assuming all lighting is LED lighting as of the current version. Title 24 Part 11 is the State Sustainability Code, CalGreen. And CalGreen has very strict regulations to control light pollution, but primarily from non-residential occupancies. In other words, all commercial lighting. CalGreen, just for, for, you know, your information, its regulations were adopted from LEED. So LEED led to CalGreen, which led to CalGreen adopting LEED's anti-light pollution regulation. It's a pretty good system. To make it very short and sweet, there is a five-zone international system that has been adopted by LEED and CalGreen. Lighting Zone Zero, One, Two, Three and Four. Lighting Zone Zero is wilderness. And by California Title 24, you're basically, you aren't allowed any lighting other than the absolute most necessary emergency lighting. Like for example, you, you get no wattage to put lights in, but you can have a light at the entrance to the trailhead or the entrance to a rest facility or something like that. That's it. Lighting Zone One is really designed for rural areas, national parks and other areas with low light levels. Lighting Zone Two is really for suburban developments and we're beginning to get into modest light levels. You see a lot of this, of course, in, in the counties and the, in the communities in and around Los Angeles. Lighting Zone Three is for urban areas, relatively high levels. And Lighting Zone Four is pretty much reserved for areas of especially high light levels. Last night I talked about the ports of Los Angeles and Long Beach and how those are actually higher than Lighting Zone Four. They really wouldn't meet any, any one of these today. This lighting zone system is code. This is required. You have the opportunity, like every community in California does, to set the lighting zones you want. You don't have to live with the default zones that are in the, in the code right now. You can create your own. So this is where, where you, working, working with your staff, you have proposed these and we fully support them. You've proposed so far that the open space zoning districts you would have. What, what, what staff wants to do is, and we think it's a really great idea, is to translate your planning zones and lighting zones into the same language. So you don't have one and then the other and you're trying to figure out how they all fit together. So the, the plan that they propose, and I credit them with coming up with this, is as follows. The open space zoning district, OS, if your regulations that are proposed in the draft you have are stricter than Lighting Zone One, they're approaching Lighting Zone Zero and they are equal to Lighting Zone Zero for ESHA areas. I think this is fabulous. The other thing it does, and this is built into Title 24 as well, is there's something called curfew. Curfew is the time after which lighting should be dimmed or turned off. And this is by code. And you have to have controls that will do that. And you are permitted to have motion sensors and other technologies that could respond after curfew, but you're really supposed to turn lights down or off after the curfew hour. And for open space, you're proposing the curfew is one hour after sunset, which makes absolutely perfect sense. We together are also proposing that the residential zoning districts, all of them, are essentially Lighting Zone One with a curfew of 11:00 PM. But you are proposing, we are proposing together, strict requirements for shielding, mounting height and fixture lumens that are more strict than are what in the residential requirements of Title 24. We think this is, again, exactly how to best maintain the qualities of the community you have right now and to perpetuate those into the future. All other zoning districts would be equal to Lighting Zone One. Now this really applies more to non-residential zones. Okay? That Lighting Zone One under Title 24 is very restrictive. It prevents fixtures from having any uplight in any parking lot or any other general lighting application. It also rec proposes that there be the curfew would be the later of 11:00 PM or the close of business, whichever is of course appropriate. What we have proposed to remain under discussion, we haven't resolved these yet, is the possibility of preserving or reserving the possible use of Lighting Zone Two for critical infrastructure. I mentioned this last night. It's a discussion point where it's sort of saying, does this make a good, good sense or not? But it would provide for the planning commission, the ability to identify something critical where more lighting might be needed. Finally, we're proposing to continue to work with your team to minimize the overlapping or conflicting requirements between Title 24 and what is currently in the proposal. There aren't many, but there's a couple. And we've identified those and those are on our hit list for things to work out in the, in the coming weeks. All this is important because of big trends in lighting. I mentioned this before, I mentioned it yesterday evening when we were here and while we were walking around, but let me just bring it all to, together here. LEDs are becoming better in all respects. In 2010 roughly, was about the first time that they became practical for outdoor lighting. Today, they're absolutely, completely ready in there. They're more efficient, they use less energy, they're better colored and they provide better optical control. So they do everything better. The, the technology is sufficiently matured so that LEDs have pushed out pretty much every conventional light source from the marketplace. Oh yes, you can go to Home Depot and buy an incandescent light bulb. Yes, you can buy an incandescent light fixture. But most people are buying incandescent light fixtures and screwing in LED bulbs. So it's, it's, the transition is just about complete. That's caused falling prices, which are pretty much beginning to level out now because we're beginning to hit the bottom of how low the prices can go. And it is a highly competitive marketplace. That's where we are today. Why this particular proposal that was in front of you now is here, I think at least is, is a major, major reason, is because it is a rapidly changing marketplace. There's a lot of old information, like we talked about last night, that says, oh, you have to do this with LEDs, you have to do that with LEDs. And a lot of companies, I hate to say it, are using misinformation to sell products. The fact of the matter is, is that the AMA kind of came out and straightened all this out with their light and health recommendations. And it wasn't just light and health, as I said last night, it's light health and the environment. And it was a uniquely defining event because the AMA has never done anything like this before. And for them to have, as Pete characterized, 533 to zero vote in favor of this ought to tell us something that we need to be listening to. Finally, light sources 3,000 K, which is the warmer toned lights we've been talking about, I'm standing under right now and lower, are now as efficient as any other alternative. There's no necessary or good reason not to comply with the AMA's recommendations. And again, as part of, I'm a professional engineer. My job in working for you is to inform you to the best of my ability on anything involving the technology I'm working with. What I am particularly concerned about is the liability that you might have if you were to choose to permit higher color temperature light sources in the community. I'm, I'm already seeing in other communities where have done this, I'm seeing law firms advertising for people to create class action lawsuits claiming health issues as a result of the 4,000 and 5,000 K lights that are put in their communities. If you have 3,000 K and lower, you can say, what's our problem? And it's very clear, it's very simple. And as a professional engineer, I can only tell you, that's, that's my strongest possible recommendation. So in commercial applications, this is, this is the other thing we have to realize. LED energy and maintenance savings are so good, they'll pay back the cost of conversion in 10 years or less. In some cases, three, four or five years or less. Like some of the parking lots we saw last night, converting high pressure sodium lighting to LED, they'll probably amortize the cost difference in four or five years. After that, they're making money by having made the conversion. These days with interest rates as they are, that's a pretty good rate of return as far as I'm concerned. I'd love to pay for them as a matter of fact, as an investment. But this is, this is the critical reason why we're here tonight and talking to you tonight about this importance. It's rumored, and I've heard these rumors a gazillion times in some of my other work. Southern California Edison is planning to end rebates or incentives for energy efficient lighting involving LEDs. And the reason why is they're saying, look, LEDs, they're the standard. We don't need to rebate anybody for them because they're standard by everything. They're right about that. Well, if they, if they don't pay the payback, if they don't give you this rebate, the payback period is extended. So instead of the payback period being five years or six years or seven years, it might be 10 years or 11 years or 12 years. And so it makes the economics less favorable. We expect a near-term rush to replace incumbent lighting in commercial applications such as parking lots, such as the ones we saw last night, to capitalize on the SCE rebates. So anything we do, we should do pretty quickly so that we don't have a lot of LED lighting installed that will frankly not be very appealing in the long run. Sort of what Pete was showing a minute ago. That's why we did this in this order. I wanted you to see what bad looks like, just to remind you on how important this, this could possibly be. So with reasonable lighting practices, a view like this can be revealed once again. We would like to be able to see, this, this is the darkest place in the entire region. We've studied it from the, from the satellite photographs and other things. Malibu is unique. And what you do will set the pace for the area around you. And maybe someday we can recover that dark sky. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jim, and thank you, Pete. And Bonnie, you have a presentation too or?
Jessica's gonna.
Jessica?
Give us an overview.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, staff has a presentation that summarizes last night's tour and discusses the draft ordinance in its current state. Last night during the tour, participants were asked to complete a survey that had five questions. This slide, although they realize the text is kind of small on it now, shows the result of the survey with rankings on a scale of one being poor and five being excellent. Some things.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Could you please tell us how many people filled out the survey?
13.
Okay, thank you.
Some of the things to point out on the survey are that the site number six was the only residential tourist stop, so it may have been judged differently by the participants. According to the survey, the most favorable stop was Site Seven, which was the Tranqus Market, followed by the Upper City Hall parking lot. Site One and Site Two included City Hall's upper and lower parking lots. And although this draft ordinance does not address street lighting, it does address some of the elements that Pete was talking about with regards to parking lot lighting that has similar features. Jim took Kelvin readings of the light fixtures at various tourist stops. The older lights at the upper parking lot registered between 1,921 Kelvin, while the newer lights at the lower parking lot registered 5,000. Tour participants commented on the surveys that they would like to see warmer and more shielded light fixtures at City Hall. As a side note, the city is currently in discussions to upgrade the City Hall lighting plan to something more energy efficient and sustainable. Site Three was the Ralph's Market. Participants looked at parking lot lights, decorative lights and loading zone lights. It was noted that many of the parking lot lights were being blocked by mature tree canopy, which shielded the lights too much. Some of the participants stated that they liked the decorative lantern lights that hang under the overhang. However, they still could see the bulbs, but that didn't seem to bother them. The loading zone lights at the rear of the property, however, were, need to be directed downward and shielded. They were very bright. Another suggestion came that maybe that they could be put on timers or something depending on when the loading zones for the CUP, when the trucks would be there. Site Four and Five consisted of the parking lot areas for the Malibu Village and Malibu Country Mart. It was felt that the Malibu Village parking lot lights should be shielded and placed on shorter poles. The bollards in the center also contain lights that due to the height produced glare at eye level. At Malibu Country Mart, Jim took a light reading of 5,700 Kelvin and many participants felt that the lighting was too bright and the pole height was too high. One person did indicate that they liked the lights, however, in generally, everybody felt that they were just too intensive. Site Six was the Malibu West Residential Neighborhood. Malibu West has an HOA that limits the number of outdoor lighting fixtures on a residence and it also limits street lights. The majority of the comments on the survey indicated that the participants liked the Malibu West neighborhood lighting plan, with the exception that a few did feel like it was too dark or at least would be too dark during the times that residents would be out on the street, maybe taking a nightly walk or just lingering on the streets. The last stop was Site Seven at Tranqus Market. This scored the highest on the survey with an overall lighting perception of 4.4. The center contains a number of different types of lighting fixtures, all of which are shielded. Although it did rank the highest, concerns that were brought up were with regards to safety and the back parking lots being underlit for employees. Included in the attachments available for the tour participants was a draft ordinance. Currently, the draft ordinance includes regulations for all outdoor lighting to be shielded and directed away from ESHA and public viewing areas. The graphic exhibit on the slide is included in the ordinance, however, staff is working to update it as it's not, it's kind of outdated, needs to be a little bit more modern. The ordinance also imposes a lighting curfew of 11:00 PM, as Jim discussed earlier, and a maximum color light of 3,000 Kelvin. Seasonal lighting and light trespass from property lines is also addressed. There are a number of exemptions from the draft ordinance, including indoor lighting, public right-of-way or street lighting, exterior lighting for residents along PCH, sign lighting, temporary construction and emergency lighting, navigational lighting, permitted fireworks displays, permitted event lighting and the Malibu School field lights. Planning staff is working with the code enforcement team to implement procedures that will aid in the enforcement of the dark sky ordinance. Incorporated into the draft are regulations with regards to light trespass from property lines. The city has purchased an illuminance meter to assist in reading trespass measurements. In order to measure this trespass levels, however, the deputy sheriff, a city employee or an agent of the city will need to have access to the property line. With regards to a compliance period, the current draft ordinance includes a 60-month or a five-year compliance period. However, issues may arise with the current compliance period, including having an obsolete requirement by the time the compliance period comes to fruition and a potential loss of energy incentives. And Jim and Pete discussed those. They, they're open to questions about those as well. And staff is continuing to research possible alternative options such as separating commercial and residential compliance, compliance periods and implementing shorter timelines. Lastly, staff has created a dark skies ordinance website found on malibu city.org backslash dark sky. The webpage includes a link that'll allow residents to sign up for e-notifications for future meetings or events, contact information, a link to tonight's and last night's packet materials and a link to the International Dark Skies Association for additional educational materials. And that concludes staff's presentation on this.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Jessica was excellent. Can we go to questions now, or do you have something else in mind?
We should be open for a public comment.
Public comment, okay. Do we have any speaker slips? If anyone would like to speak, you are welcome to. Be nice if you filled out a form, either before or after you speak. Norm, I saw you hand one in, so why don't you head on up?
Sure. Thank you, I guess, city council members and planning commission members. The only concern that I might have is with regard to commercial operations. Rather than having a curfew, I think it should be based upon when the commercial facility closes. And I'll go a step further than that. It probably should be one hour after it closes, because there's a lot of activity in the parking lot that goes on after a restaurant such as Nobu closes. That's when, you know, everybody packs up all the materials, they also bring in food for the next day, and so on and so forth. So lighting is important. And I'm not sure exactly when Nobu closes, but just, let's assume they close at 11:30, and we have a curfew where all the lights have to be shut down or severely reduced at 11 o'clock.
Norm, I think it's said in there that it's whatever's later. So if the business is open until after that time, then the light's going to stay open until an hour after that business closes.
Is that correct? Because I thought it was the opposite.
It's a curfew at 11:00 PM or close of business, whichever is later.
Oh, I take it back. Okay. I misread it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Norm. Who else would like to speak? Pat, did you want to?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you can fill it out later, or turn it in after you speak. I knew you wanted to, so I thought I'd pick on you. Dolphin Award winners always get to go to the front of the line.
In terms of the definition of outdoor lighting, they just said it's electrical lighting, and I would like solar included. In Malibu West, we have a lot of little solar lamps, and they're not shielded, and they're bright. It's all the white, white lights, so I would suggest that. As far as the effective date, I think it's five years is far too long. I think for residences, if they're not in compliance, they can just shut off a lot of the lights. And I don't think new light fixtures cost that much. You know, they can get inexpensive ones and inexpensive lighting. As far as the commercial lighting, I think it's just a cost of doing business. So I would think two years with a possible one-year extension would be enough. As far as indoor lighting, we saw last night at Sephora the impact of it, and I don't think people who live in glass houses, there may be some minimal things you can do. Even the cemetery approval had, that indoor lighting should be kept to a minimum. So I would like to see maybe at least, you know, that there's warm lighting instead of this white, white lighting that's out, or maybe there's some way the glass could be tinted. And I know last night Pete was talking about some ways that they do it, so I'd like him to speak to that tonight, if it's acceptable to you. And like, for example, the Wizzen Center, after closing, they're allowed just one warm light to light the interior of commercials. So I think shops should really be, have to have warm lighting inside and reduce it after And I don't know, does the city have any street lighting? You're not in charge of it, do you? Do you have any?
I think the city may have some, a few streetlights, but in general, they're on, most of the streetlights are on PCH. And our, this ordinance isn't proposing to address street lighting, but it, you know, it may be something the city wants to address in the future.
I would like to see city street lighting extinguished, I guess, and to work with Caltrans to only have it like on the west end at major intersections to have street lighting. Let's see. Oh, the ESHA lighting, if there's an ESHA buffer and there's enough room, I'd like to see no lights spill into the buffer area, too. I, since the AMA says anything over 3,000, 3,000 Kelvins can cause health issues, I would like to see a maximum of 2,700, which is Jim's favorite number, and I don't see why we have to have 3,000. Let's see what else, what other notes I have here. Oh, I'd like to see the number of fixtures limited on buildings, oh, okay, residential buildings. And obviously, well, do I get to say a few more things, or no?
You know, why don't you finish up? Sure, finish up, we have a very, looks like a thin crowd here, so.
All right, I'm almost done. I guess, I don't understand exactly how lumens translates exactly into watts. I understand wattage, so I'd like an explanation of that as far as the ESHA and perimeter lighting and how bright that would be. I'm sure it's not very bright, but I just don't understand that. And I'd like to know that homeowners associations and neighborhoods can exact more stringent lighting if they want. And I'm not an enthusiast of site plan review to allow greater lighting, because I think once you start giving it to somebody else, then it starts a trend, and they say, well, you gave it to him, so why not give it to me? And I've seen it happen when there's site plan review that, in certain instances, that I don't agree with. And I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Pat. Susan Gildman?
Hi, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I was really happy to see that holiday lighting's on the list of things the studio's looking at. I love holiday lighting, but it's a little out of control, and it stays up and creeps up people's palm trees and is all over the place, so that's great. I'd like to know if there's a way of addressing the beaches and harbor. I know they're not part of, under our authority, but getting Westwood Beach under control would be awfully nice. And there's a heck of a lot of residential lighting on the beach houses that just shines out onto the beach and the ocean, so if there's a way of doing that, that would be great. And the other concern, at least on Point Doom, there's a lot of old tennis court lights, and some people like to use them, not much for tennis anymore, but their kids play out there. But it would be just nice if there was an incentive way to either get people to take them down, or to shade them and swap out those lights especially, because that can be really bright, and if you've got several of them on on one night, it lights it up like a, you know, oil refinery. So thanks very much, and I think this is just fantastic.
Thank you, Suzanne. Kami Winikoff?
Good evening, commissioners and city councilmen. My name is Kami Winikoff. I'm here representing the Malibu Community Alliance. I'm not going to repeat, Pat was really, gave a great, a lot of points. But as many of you know, for the last five years, I've been kind of a dark sky chaser. And I'm really excited to see us here tonight and to see all this hard work come to fruition. I really want to just take a moment to say some thank yous, if I can. I really want to thank Jim Benya and Pete Strouzer. They have been amazing. I don't know if many of you know that they've been committed, I mean, you know they've been committed to this beautiful and important resource, but, and protecting it. But they have done so much work for this city in particular. They have worked on the Tranqus lighting, which, as you pointed out, everyone said was really some of the best lighting we saw last night. Malibu High School, which we haven't seen yet, but it's really improved Pepperdine Campus, Santa Monica College Campus in Malibu, and most recently, the Malibu Memorial Park. And the introduction of Nancy Clanton, Jim's colleague to Pepperdine, and specifically to Ryanne Ballard, has helped forge a relationship that will most definitely improve dark skies for us in the city. I mean, they are just like a little city within our city. So there are so many others in the community who lent their support to this ordinance, but I'd like to give a special shout-out to Julie Tobias, Cynthia and Todd Kesselman, and Scott Greco. And I also want to thank the Malibu City staff, Bonnie and Jessica, for all of the work that they've done. It's been, this is a lot of work. And in particular, I want to thank Steve Uring for many years of hard work, and Skylar Peak for his leadership on this ordinance. I'm very excited about the way this ordinance is moving forward, but my main concern is that I just want to make sure that there's, and it seems that it is going in that way, we haven't seen the revisions yet, but that there's clarity and teeth, so that this can be properly implemented and peer-reviewed. You know, we've spent, our organization's spent a considerable amount of resources on preserving dark skies in Malibu, and I'm hoping we do not have to continue spending money going forward on ensuring that these projects light responsibly and protect our dark sky, that with the specific wording of this ordinance, we will be assured that we are lighting as responsibly as we can, creating the least amount of light pollution and trespass. And I just really want to thank everyone that's been involved for doing that work. Thank you.
Thank you, Kami. Mary Ann Riggins?
I wanted to say thank you for last night. I thought it was really, it was a great thing, very educational, learned a lot of stuff out there, and staff was great and all the stuff. Thank you, Pete and Jim, for everything you've done. One of the things I saw there, there was an exemption for houses along Pacific Coast Highway. That kind of concerns me, because there's some houses out there that have some pretty bright lights, and having an exemption just because you're on Pacific Coast Highway doesn't seem quite balanced, so it would be good that they are limited to how many lights they may have. I understand there are concerns, especially on the east end, with the traffic and everything, but it's still, they should have a lumen level or a light fixture level or something. And the other one, oh, for neighborhoods, if we could make it, not that neighborhoods are allowed to install lights, but if a neighborhood decides that they do want to add lighting to their neighborhood, that they have the option of some vehicle to be able to come through, that they don't have to make some type of zone text amendment or some change to the municipal code in order to even go forward with asking for lights. That there's at least something in there that kind of gives them some direction if there might be a possibility that they want to install something in the future, so that they're just not locked out from it. Okay, thank you.
What kind of lighting do you mean by that?
I would say just very low-level street lighting for some things, at some intersections around areas. There's just some places. I know on Point Doom, there's a lot of people that are out at night, that it's very, very dark streets, they're not using flashlights, and there are some intersections and some areas that it would be good just to have some safety lighting. And I want the neighborhoods to be able to decide for themselves, that if it's appropriate and the neighbors get together and they want it, that there's at least a vehicle for them to go forward with it, if they, there's a consensus for it. If there's not, there's no need for it. I'm not saying put them in, but at least let the neighborhoods have the opportunity to decide.
All right, thank you very much. Lynn Norton?
Excuse me, Chair Pearson.
Yes.
I could, I'd like to respond to a couple of things Mary Ann said, just for clarification on the PCH exemption. The intention with that is for, it's specific to houses, especially on the east end, it doesn't call out the east end, but houses that, such as in the east end, that sit right under streetlights, where their whole facades are lit up with streetlights and they can't do anything about it. We were trying to provide them some relief from having to retrofit things that are, it's, you're not going to see any difference because the streetlight is shining on it anyway, so it's specific to just the facades that are lit by streetlights, so.
But don't you think if they changed the streetlights, that then you would see a difference?
We could put, we could build something into the ordinance to allow for that transition, that this exemption's only good as long as you're, you fall under the light of a streetlight or something like that, but I just wanted to explain what the thinking was behind that exemption.
Excellent. Thank you. Lynn?
So I would get rid of that exemption, too. I vote for no site plan review. I wouldn't put LZ2 anywhere. Lumen limits, I think, I mean, all these other things are really important, you know, the uplighting and all that, but I definitely hope that we have, you know, lumen limits, which I think is planned, but I just want to reiterate that. Regarding five years to comply, I mean, maybe there are some things that are very hard to do, that makes sense, but for things where you're just going to, you know, replace some easy fixes, the whole thing shouldn't need to take five years. You know what I mean? If you're just replacing a couple thousand dollars worth of fixtures, and it's going to make a major difference, maybe it could be somehow, you know, balanced in, that some items could be done much more quickly. and I guess, just, I saw that there was an exemption for the Malibu High School field lights, but they probably don't need to have uplighting or trespassing either, so there's probably some things that would actually apply to that, too, and could be addressed. That's it, thanks.
Thank you very much, Lynn. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address? Okay, then let's move to the dais. Oh, do we have one? I'm sorry, yeah. Come on up to the microphone, if you could. Thank you. And if you could state your name and fill out a form afterwards, so we can keep, so we can keep track of you.
I'm Beata Nelson, I live on Malibu Road. I'd like to have some sort of qualification about whether the ocean is Esha, because there are very bright lights that go over property lines, and when it's a high tide, they wash all over the insides of buildings and through bedrooms and over the porches, and there's no way to really control, here's the tide, the light's going to stay right here on your property line, so, and.
What, sort of, just to clarify what you're referring to, is that when the waves break up against the beach, there's a lot of white foam, and then that casts the light from the houses and reflects it all over the place? Okay.
Like flaming into the ocean.
I think the beach lights are prohibited under this, aren't they?
Yeah. Lighting in the shore would be prohibited, so that would have to be brought into compliance as part of this ordinance.
Isn't that existing, that you're not allowed to do that?
Yes.
So like, currently, like, if there's properties or addresses that you have that have a problem with that, you can notify staff and we can make sure that that's addressed?
Yeah, I just got in touch with code enforcement about one particular house, because they're absentee owners, and they come and they don't seem to know how to work their own lights. So they leave, and then the lights are just left on for weeks, and it's really uncomfortable. So that would be fantastic, if we had some guidance on that. That's it.
Thank you very much, Beata.
Thanks. And I'm supposed to fill this out?
That would be great.
Okay.
Appreciate it very much. Is there anyone else? Okay, well, let's move up here, and I know there's questions up here. Laura, do you have any questions? What if I wanted to start over that way? Okay. Jeff?
Thank you very much for the presentation. Very enlightening, no pun intended. But in situations like this, my, one of my main concerns is, has to do with the public policy issues, I guess is, you might call it. I worry about enforceability. I worry about passing ordinances that we can't, or don't really intend to have the ability to enforce. They used to tell the Coastal Commission when they were thinking about banning garbage disposals, that, you know, I'm a lawyer, I can install a garbage disposal. Don't pass a law that teaches me to be a scofflaw. So my question comes back to the applicability provisions. Now, the way I read this, this is on, what is it on? It's on 1714.020, that's purpose, and then 030 is applicability. So what this is going to apply to is, A, all outdoor light fixtures installed, modified, or replaced after the effective date of the ordinance. Okay, so, property owner A, whose property was permitted prior to cityhood, buys a light fixture to install outside, and that light fixture is going to be covered by this ordinance, correct? Okay. Second, applications for land entitlements after the effective use. So anybody who comes to get a CDP or any kind of a permit is going to have to have these conditions imposed as part of it, right? Okay. Okay. And then, C is a little bit weird, I'm going to pass that one by. And then D is property which has already been regulated by a CDP or other permit which contains lighting regulation. These new lighting regulations are going to apply to those properties as well, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So that leaves, let's take a hypothetical property that has a permit that was issued prior to cityhood. That, is the staff's intention that this ordinance will not apply to those properties? Is that correct?
The idea with the compliance period is that all lighting, regardless of when it was installed or permitted, would, by the end of the compliance period, have to be brought into compliance.
And so that's the compliance period you referenced in 1741090, the application of ordinance to legal non-conforming lighting?
Yes.
Okay. The problem is you've, you kind of need to go back to your draftsmanship here. Problem is, in the first section, you've talked about what's, where it's applicable, and that limits what you can do with the non-conforming section. So you've defined yourself into a corner. Okay? And I was going to say, because, like I say, I'm always concerned about passing ordinances that you can't control, but if you're buying lumen meters and you're going to send the jackbooted sheriff's deputies around to tell the people to turn off their lights, I guess that solves that enforceability problem. It may have a political ramification that you might want to think about, but as far as enforceability is concerned, I think you've solved the problem. That's my question. Oh, I do have one more question. I've always been annoyed by the sheriff's, sorry, the fire station that we permitted, the planning commission permitted, to have a flagpole that was allowed to fly the flag 24 hours a day because it has an upward directed light.
Those are exempt.
I'm sorry?
I think flagpoles are exempt.
Yeah, and, but why should we exempt, you know, I've always thought that the firemen during their copious overtime periods could be, you know, go down at sunset and take the flag down, and it wouldn't need an upward shining light in order to avoid offending the flag regulations or the flag protocol. But a flagpole would be exempt, and that would be because, because it's too difficult to take the flag down?
I don't recall that we have an exemption for flagpoles.
I didn't see any exemption in there.
I think that the exemption was referenced in the presentation last night. I remember seeing it on a slide. I'm seeing someone nodding their head.
Okay, I think, I think that is, that was in reference to the model lighting ordinance itself, and we've adapted these exemptions in the draft ordinance, and it does, we don't have a flagpole included in here.
Okay, good.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Steve?
Thank you, Commissioner. Couple items. You know, there's an enforceability component that's built in it, that I'm happy with. But let me just give you an example. The Santa Monica College, all right? They came forward with a lighting proposal that was done by their lighting engineer. And we went to them and said, geez, we don't think this is really good. And I'll tell you, Mahmoud and Gerard, who were, I mean, were accommodating, and they said, well, why don't we get somebody that really knows what they're doing? So we gave it to Jim, and Jim was able to take their lighting proposal and make it better, right? I mean, and significantly reduced the amount of lighting that was coming out of it. So I'm just wondering, is we go forward and a commercial property comes forward with a lighting proposal, how are we going to know that it does what we want it to do? And I don't have an answer for the, okay, it's just, somehow, we were lucky with Santa Monica College, because again, they were a good neighbor and they did what we needed, but everybody may not be the same way, so.
Part of the, our contract with IDA is going, well, it does include working on exactly this issue of how, you know, training for staff, and then also putting processes in place for the best way to review the more complex lighting plans. Hopefully, the, you know, the more straightforward ones, staff will be able to do without having to, you know, have outside help. The hope is that the ordinance will be simple enough that most of the time we can do that.
Yeah, and I think that's good. Jim, you going to say something?
Do I have to push this button?
You're, I think you're on.
I'm on live, okay. In that review, and I want to, I want to stress how carefully we've been working with staff to intertwine Title 24, more explicitly in this case, Part 11 Cal Green than the energy standards. We worked with the applicant and their engineering team to make sure that they fully complied with Title 24, Part 11 for lighting Zone 1. Or lighting Zone 2, they, you know, they were, they were sort of close to both. And the fact of the matter is, it was Title 24 that was the most critical part of it, was bringing that to their attention. So we already have, in the California code of regulations, a lot of strength that will reduce the problems that historically we've had with commercial lighting. And they knew it, they were, you know, upon my review, they went back and redesigned, they respected it fully. They did an excellent job once it was pointed out to them. I think one of the real problems that I'm pointing out here is Cal Green, Title 24, Part 11, is a relatively new code, and it's actually gone through significant revisions. It was first introduced in 2010. It wasn't well-written, got rewritten in 2013, much better. It got re-released 2016 with effective date of January 1 this year. It is a much better code, but it's only seven years old, and many architects and engineers and contractors and others really don't know it all that well yet. When this design team focused on it, they did an excellent job. So I think it's, it's a matter of reminding applicants and their engineers and architects to comply with Title 24. And that's a, that's a big change from what we were talking about five years ago, when Title 24 wasn't that good. So, you know, let's credit the state and the process with having been probably the greatest part of why this is coming out well.
Before you go, last night you gave me some, we talked about, you know, what do you need, you need a good engineer to be able to make, and you gave me a quote, if you could do that one, because that was really good, whatever that was.
Oh, it was, it was, it was one of the more famous quotes of our industry, of one of the top professors in the world teaching lighting, said, there's, there's bad lighting. Bad lighting has problems. There's too much glare, light trespass, many of the things we're working to prevent. And I think a good code should prevent bad lighting. Then he said, then there's indifferent lighting. Indifferent lighting has no flaws, no errors, it doesn't do anything bad. So I think all codes should indirectly or directly sort of promote indifferent lighting and prevent bad lighting. And then he said, good lighting excites the soul. We can't make a code that excites souls. If we did, architects would be out of business because most of the buildings they design don't. But the truth of the matter is, is that, you know, preventing bad design is what a code should do. And we've had this discussion many times with staff to make sure that's the line we're drawing. And I think this, this current draft is in excellent shape and moving in the right direction.
Thank you very much. I have just two other comments. One is, in terms of the enforcement process, and this, these are something to think about. This is, okay? You know, what we saw last night, or what I saw last night, there were some places like the gas station down by Trancas, the gas, okay, that were major abusers, for lack of a better word, okay? And then there were some places like the Country Mart where, you know, Michael Cox had put in lighting. It wasn't exactly what we wanted, but it was better than what you saw in some other places. So, I mean, maybe an enforcement process is one that says, look, if you've got locations that are, and I'm not sure, sure exactly how to measure it, that are so far off the chart of what we're looking for, we should go after those early, okay? And they should be required to make changes, get it fixed, because it's just offensive and it's wrong, okay? Where the other locations, maybe you give them, you know, three, four years to comply, and then you go to the residential guys and you say, you got your five-year period. But something that says, let's address the problems, the big ones first, and get those fixed up, because I think it'll make everybody's life a little bit easier. Other than that, I would like to thank Jim and Pete, because I think you guys have done a tremendous job. You know, thank you very much, this has been very informative. I want to thank Bonnie and their staff. This whole process and the mechanics you've gone through to get us here have been excellent. I want to thank Skylar, because Skylar made a campaign promise that he was going to get this thing done, and I appreciate it. I want to thank Kami, because I, I mean, I, look, I've had the benefit of working in Malibu with some people that have been tenacious in going after the things they want to get done. Ozzy Silma was one, Kami, you're another, and I've really enjoyed that whole process. So thank you very, very much. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Chris?
All right, so thanks, everyone, especially Jim and everyone for taking us through last night, that was a good, I learned a lot there. I'm kind of going to go through just the draft ordinance to kind of organize my thoughts, but a couple of things are kind of out of order. One thought I had when we were going through last night, kind of LZ0 versus LZ1, it seems like pretty much everything we want is in that, kind of in that space. So just kind of in terms of maybe a little feedback, what have you, when I look at kind of the definitions in Section 050, the public open space, residential zoning, and all other zoning, I mean, those are effectively kind of dancing between zero and one, and it's just kind of specifying what you'd have in each of those areas. That's really what the intent of, because that's kind of the body of direction. Any comment, or is that kind of like a correct interpretation of what I'm seeing there?
So your question is?
Is that, does that pretty much strictly adhere to an L0 or 1, just with some more specificity for those zones?
Yeah, we basically, we found that when we started initially with this, the, you know, the council, the idea was to use the model lighting ordinance, which has all those zones in it, as the basis for the city's ordinance. And so we, you know, we started out looking at creating the lighting zone map that would follow the model lighting ordinance. And what we found is that, you know, those zones were matching up with our land use designations, and so, but, you know, so yes, I think that's your interpretation.
Great, okay. So effectively, we're targeting kind of zero to one for the kind of standards that Jim's called out.
Right.
Great. And then, I think that comes up later, then on Section 000, applicability, yeah, applicabil, wow, I can't speak today. Applicability, thank you. Thanks for backing me up. Section B there, just who reviews that lighting plan then? I think there was a section later that came up, but I just put my note there. Does that come up later in the, in the document here?
Your question is, who reviews the lighting plan?
Yeah.
That's something that we're going to figure out again, it'll, I think it'll depend on the type of plan it is. If it's a, if it's a shopping center where there's a more complex lighting scheme and things like that, we may need outs, we will need outside help for that. And since there is in the building code, the requirement for compliance with Title 24, California Code Check, who does our plan checking? Part of our going-forward plan with this ordinance will be to interface with them and figure out how to make sure that these all mesh together. So it may be that we rely on the plan checkers, depending on their level of expertise with this, because in theory, they should be looking at lighting plans anyway for building code compliance, so that's, that's what we have in mind right now.
And then as far as if, like, let's say I'm going to do something in my house and have some more lighting, should I plan on kind of bringing someone in to make sure I'm in alignment with that, or just kind of put something together to the best of my abilities and take it for a check? You know, how would you, you know, depending on the scope of a project, how would that kind of play out?
That's a good question. It's kind of similar to, I think, how, you know, how's our, how our landscape ordinance works, when, you know, you've got home gardeners who switch out their flower beds and think they don't come in for a landscape plan for things like that. So I think it'll be kind of a similar thing. I mean, obviously, people are going to change out light bulbs and things like that, and that's not going to require a permit. We're going to prob, we're going to need to look at when things require a permit and when we're going to need to look for compliance. But, you know, when you're replacing fixtures and things at your house, that's not something that requires a permit, and we're not putting something in place that would require people to start coming in for, for that.
I think, Chris, I think that what could happen there is you would definitely be, you know, if you didn't take a look at the ordinance, you came in and put in a bunch of, you know, metal halide wall pack light fixtures around your house, you'd be probably foolish not to expect someone from the city to come and say, you selected the wrong light, and here's the ordinance, and, you know, I hope that you read it, you know, before you go and put up and replace these light fixtures again.
And I guess my main point is, as long as there's something in the process that I don't find that out after I've got them all in and spent seven grand or whatever it is, and then, oh, hey, you can't do that. So as long as we have something early in the process.
I would say that a lot of people in the city oftentimes go and do things and come and ask for forgiveness, so.
Well, driving down here tonight, we're talking with Pat, and the idea we sort of had on this, because we were thinking about in our own neighborhood, was it'd be great to have the city help us with an education sheet that we could, that could go out to the city, that we could give to our neighborhood, to help with the transition and make everyone aware that's already there, and the new people that come in, what that is. Because you're right, there'll, I'm sure there'll be some horrible discoveries by people that didn't really think their plan ahead, yeah.
Yeah, that, again, kind of like the staff training component to our contract with our experts, the outreach, planning for an outreach campaign and things like that. I mean, we'd love to have more, we'd love to have a full house right now, but it's hard to get people out at night, so we're, we're going to be looking for ways to reach people to make sure that they're not surprised, that they know in advance, and also try to let them know what the easiest ways are to comply, whether they're commercial or residential property owners, because it's, they're, I think they're, our goal is to make it as easy as possible for people to be able to meet these requirements, so that it's not a big burden and that type of thing.
Thank you. And towards the thought, or?
The topic you're talking about is, is one that, you know, perplexes everyone. I'm closely related to the processes of IDA in Tucson, and I spent a lot of time in Tucson, and I've learned a lot from Tucson. I think, you know, you've already made a good start. You've already initiated a dark sky website. I think the single most important thing you can do that will make this easy will be to keep it updated, put up really good examples, do this, don't do that. And that will be, the single most powerful thing you can do is education. I would also encourage you, once you get that all done, and that's something we'll be advising and helping on through the course of the rest of our contract, is to then go directly to the implementers of lighting, to the contractors who most often work in the area, to the distributors who service the area, and explain to them what you're looking for. And, you know, make that extra effort, and I think it'll pay off in spades. You're going to be one of the first communities in the world and the nation to have undertaken it with the seriousness you're doing. And I think these are the ways to do it right, do it quickly, and enjoy the benefits right away.
Great, thanks. And I kind of keep on going through here on Section E, I guess Section E2. There was a comment before about the reference to public streets. I'm kind of, I'm toying, or kind of trying to understand if we'd want to add public or private streets, or if we just want to, the Section B of 0050, which has residential zoning, it seems like that could be followed if there's a community that wants to have lighting. So I just wondered, maybe, any thoughts on kind of, do we make an adjustment on E2 so the private street could be treated like public, so you could light as you need? Or do we treat it like any other residential lighting, like in Section 050B? Because it does say you could have lights up to 18 feet off the ground, 850 lumens, shielded, et cetera. I don't know, just any thoughts?
We can definitely look into that.
Okay. Then the same area, E3? I didn't know how to, oh, yeah, 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 sorry. So I know we talked about that in the public comment also. It seemed to me like, could we just shield it so that the light doesn't come on that property? I, you know, if we're going to keep that or drop it, I just didn't quite, I'm still not quite understanding how that one kind of works into this. Is it just that you, you allow that house to be lit up by kind of that glare coming off the light? Is that, all of this is acknowledging that that resident can't control that?
Yeah, that, that's basically it. We were trying to acknowledge, exactly like you said, that residents that residents that are, whose homes are, the facade is, is right under a street light, can't control the amount of light. And so, if they've got existing, I mean, if they're putting in new things, we would want them to comply. But if, in terms of retroactively making them comply when they can't control how bright it is out front, that's, that was the idea.
And in that, the them in that statement, is that going to be like, what, who puts those lights on PCH? Who maintains those?
The streetlights?
Yeah.
Um, I, I think it's Southern California Edison, but that may be a more complex question than just one agency.
And could we work with them to put some type of shielding so the property isn't lit up, you know?
I think that there's, there's another step that's involved in terms of the street lighting that's being discussed tonight. That involves the city working with Caltrans and SCE to, one, put in lights that are more efficient. But in, we've seen we're putting in more lights that are more efficient in some of the shopping centers. Has the negative effect of that of doing it right away before the technology was there, not paying for the more expensive item, has been negative because now they're going to wind up having to replace those twice. So, I think the goal here is to, yeah, we should definitely be not shining a light on a house and not backlighting a house from a light fixture that's on a street. And they make a shade that we should probably be using because it's designed to light the highway, not the house. You know, our, I think this, the, the physical challenge becomes, there's areas where the white line on PCH and someone's front door are 10 or 15 feet or 25 feet away. And that light that we're talking about is sitting on a 25, 30, 40 foot pole. So, even if you used a spotlight and shined it right down, there's a chance that you're going to get some light that's going to go on the house. But I think that it can definitely be, be mitigated as we work. I mean, I, I would say that the exemption, I know that when we were at Zorasis, it seemed like something that was really needed. And it kind of seems silly to me now, especially if we're going to work with, if the goal is going to be to, to really, you know, I mean, maybe we take that up at the time when we get more compliance from Caltrans and SCE, maybe that's the best way, way to address that at this point. That would probably be my recommendation.
And then, the other one, E four, they've got a lighting solely for signs. I know last night when we were at one of the parking lots, there were some unshielded lights. Do we want to have any guidance on that? Or they can have whatever lighting, you know, that, that commercial site wants?
Um, I think the, this, again, this is another item that's drawn from the model lighting ordinance. There's such a variety of, of lighting involved with signs. I think it just, that's why there's a clean break with, let's don't even go there with, with the complexity of that and, and an overall lighting ordinance. We are going to be putting out a request for proposals for our sign ordinance update within, I think, within the next two, three weeks. So, we hope to get that going and, and lighting of signs would be part of that.
You're teasing us on a sign ordinance, right?
I'm actually not teasing you.
That'd be amazing.
Well, and just for then, like, let's say that I live in front of one of these shopping centers and that light is like into my bedroom or something. Do I have any recourse? Or that's just, I, I just have to approach that vendor or something? How would I deal with that?
Do you mean a, a light from a parking lot or something?
A light from a sign, specifically from a sign. You know, if that's the only one that you have glare coming in your bedroom or something.
Um, that's a good question.
So, I mean, as I read it now, there'd be nothing I could do as a resident to restrict that, right?
Yeah, right now, this doesn't address sign lighting.
I would definitely add that the resident, give resident an option to address the sign lighting if it's affecting residents.
Yeah, if it reaches a level of nuisance too, they'd have an action potentially available to them.
Okay. And then, next up on general requirements, section B, should there be something that says subject to that subsection F? Because it seemed like there were several times where you've got light pollution referenced, but you don't call back to how that's defined? Yeah, like, you've got it down below here, allowable light trespass. And whenever you talk about light pollution, there are several sections where you do that, should we refer back to that same trespass clause? So, we know what exactly is allowed for light pollution? So, you know, specifically in that dot zero four zero B, should the, should there be a line at the, you know, something added after time, or is it said, subject to subsection F below?
There's a definition for light pollution, and it's, it's broader than just light trespass. It's meant to capture all of the problems with excess light, you know, the, the sky glow, when light goes over property lines, energy waste, all of those things. So, that's why it doesn't reference the light trespass specifically.
Okay, and Title 24, I assume is what kind of helps define that light pollution so that that's got a clear definition? Because I'm just uncomfortable, I wonder if it says kind of maximum light level feasible. Oh, it's the maximum I can do, you know, but they're blowing up everyone's eyeballs with, with the ton of light. I did, you know, that's all I'm concerned with, is that language is subject to interpretation. And then, on D, there's 20, 3,000 coming or less. I know there've been public comment about 2,700. Is that something we'd want to adjust to? Or is 3,000 good enough? I wasn't sure on that one.
3,000, I think, is what's in the model lighting ordinance, and so, that's where we drew this from. I mean, if it makes sense based on our consultant's expertise to ratchet that down to 2,700, we can certainly do that. And we can also, you know, as, if the technology continues to change or in, a lower number becomes desirable, we could, you know, amend this in the future.
Okay, okay.
I said, and then have everyone replace all their lights again?
I want to get in Skylar's business.
Okay, and, and then on section F, I just wondered in reading that, it seems like we'd have to have people coming to enforce. So, could people just borrow the equipment to confirm if they've got light, light trespass above the allowable levels, you know? So, come into the city, borrow the equipment for a night or something, check it out, or?
No.
Right, just checking.
That light meter was very expensive. We're not loading it out, but we can certainly.
But you can definitely call code enforcement and have them come and.
We can send code enforcement with the light meter.
Okay, okay.
Could be a full-time lighting position here.
Yeah, that's something I'm afraid of, trying to figure out how we can kind of bypass all those extra steps. And then, on section H, you specifically call it LED rope lights being prohibited. I just wasn't sure. What if you shield a rope light? Can you, can you have that then? Or, you know?
The only way to shield a rope light would be under something like a stairwell or under a house. So, that would be the only thing where I would allow it, that I think that it should be allowed. So, I know that it's exempt on there, but I think that rope light should probably be allowed or like a tape light. A lot of people use LED tape light to light like a soffit or something. So, you could have a soffit that's under an eve. And that would be the area where that application would work, and you wouldn't want to not allow that.
Yeah, I agree. There was, there were a couple of instances during the tour where there were, there was lighting under eaves and things like that, that, you know, kind of made us think, you know, maybe we want to be careful about not over restricting where, or allowing caveats like under eaves and, and things like that where it's effectively shielded so that it's not too restrictive.
So, keep the LED rope lights as prohibited for now? Or would we say sufficiently shielded LED rope lights, you know, just?
We can look at some, some language to deal with situations where it's the, any, any type of light like that might be under an eve or something where it's, the fixture itself doesn't incorporate a shield, but it's effectively shielded by some other structure.
You could say that it's not exposed to the sky.
Then, next on the, to zero five zero, A to C and D, should that specifically say shielded lights? It doesn't call them out as needing to be shielded, just in exceeding 850 lumens? Or is it inferred that everything is shielded?
Sorry, could you repeat the question?
Sorry, yeah. On section zero five zero, the public open space, the, the section two C and D, you call out lumens maximum not to exceed, but I wasn't sure if they also must be shielded? Or would you allow non-shielded lights in open space?
I think the intent is to have all of them shielded.
I wasn't sure that, because, you know, just reading the section, if I were going to try to do my lighting, I might just put up a, their bulb with that lumens.
But is your house in public open space?
Maybe it's not my house.
And if you go back to section 17, 41041, under the general requirements, the, the statement there where it says fully shielded fixtures shall be fully shielded, that's, that's for all of the lighting fixtures.
Blanket lighting approach.
Okay, and then, oh, there was one other thing when we were driving around at the sites, tree placement came up. And if, you know, the fact you put trees really close to your lights, you know, some math Jim gave would put at least the distance of the height of the pole away from the tree. Do we want to have anything like that? I know it gets into kind of landscaping issues, et cetera. But I know it came up last night during a conversation.
Wouldn't that sort of be something that would be scrutinized a little bit more? I mean, I would find it more difficult for us right now to go to someone like the Ralph Shopping Center owner and tell him, you have to remove the poles that cost you thousands of dollars, and you need to move them 20 feet, and you need to rip up your parking lot to do so. Whereas, if we were to change the type of light fixture, and I, I think it'd be more than new planning when you're looking at a newer project, or a project came in for a major renovation where they're submitting, submitting a parking lot plan, a landscape plan, you would identify that.
I, I would agree with that. I, I thought it was really noticeable at Ralph's how, you know, bright the lights were, yet I had a lot of trouble seeing very far because of the shadowing and the, the dark spots. And it was, that was really an interesting part of the tour to me. It really, really showed how important placement of the poles is compared to landscaping.
I think that for anyone, the eye doesn't lie when the contrast gets extreme. So, when you go from very bright light to very dark light, it just becomes more pronounced and harder to see. I think that's the, the, the beauty, I guess, of the physics of light and how it works to your eye. But, so, yeah, we need to be careful of that. I don't think that that's something entirely that can go in at, at this point. But it should definitely be considered by planning when, anytime that comes by the desk. If you were to see a, you know, a 25 gallon tree going in the ground next to a concrete, you know, light post that goes 20 feet in the air, that'd probably raise a bit of concern, as evidenced by where you've seen problems.
That is something that we could review pretty easily. I know with the landscaping plans for commercial facilities, the city biologist does look at whether or not the trees are going to be, you know, intercepting the pole at any time. On the reverse side, we could just look at that if the trees are already there. It's, it's pretty easy just to basically eyeball it during the plan review.
Great. And then, next up on that 60 months in section 090, I know there was some public comment and some also commentary earlier. Could we kind of go in phases or something, or identify kind of more problematic properties to kind of come up first? You know, is, could we, any language like that be added? Some percentage or something by, because otherwise, you know, we'd have everybody come on the last month or something, I don't know.
With regards to enforcing, we'd have to talk to the city attorney's office as to how we would do that. Because we started just to go off everybody we thought was a huge violator, it might be looked at as we're doing selective enforcement. So, we'd have to be very specific as to how we draw that up. But we could, in terms of the compliance period, to have maybe, like we said earlier, maybe do commercial first, residential later, and move along that way.
Yeah, you could have a phasing period that would go in based on different criteria.
I, I recall that when we reviewed this at Zorasis, that we had a bit of conversation about that and, and more leaned towards doing the commercial first and the residential second. And I believe that the time period I thought that we had recommended was significantly shorter than the five-year period. I think that we had.
That was for residential, not commercial.
If I could address that, at the Zorasis meeting, we, we discussed everything from six months to six years. And the agreement was, we don't know, we'll put it in as a placeholder. And five years was just said, okay, well, we'll put that in with the understanding that it's going to be addressed. With the advent of LED lights and the technology coming on, sooner is better. Because there's, there's, you know, going to be a lot of garbage thrown at the market too, and they're going to see some poor lighting going in. But it's, it's important to take advantage, particularly with the rebates that are being offered that are going to be removed. So, having the, the time being a shorter duration may be not in what's, what's happened in the past. But what's happened in the past didn't have this draw of having the LED technology of being available and having the incentives being taken away close, you know, in, you know, near time. So, you know, I, I think having two years sounds reasonable. And it would still be within a time span of where the technology would be there. And hopefully, they could take advantage of incentives that will be offered, that will one day be pulled away.
Okay, I just.
Or sooner.
Yeah. And I got just two left. The one's kind of a combo question, just on, kind of in line with this replacement bulbs. We saw a number of cases where somebody started with, say, 2,700 and put in like 5K. What would, you know, how would we monitor that? And then, kind of tied to that, in section 100, there's reference to Title One, Title One, Chapter 1.10 for penalties. What are penalties either for, you know, for, for different types of violations, you know? How would that work? Like, hey, you have one bulb about a 50 off, or like the whole site off?
I think it might depend on what kind of development permit they, they received. If they received some sort of CDP for large-scale development, that calls out specific requirements and conditions in, in the resolution. That might be a, a different form of enforcement action. If it's just a, a small residential thing where we've tried to, you know, get the neighbors to comply, that might be moved to something more like an admin citation.
The, the goal in this is going to be compliance. The goal in this is not going to be enforcement action and levying fines against people. The goal is going to be able to see the stars at night better than we can now.
Goal is always compliance. I have a one question while we're in, with the area where we're talking about, this residential zoning districts. Number three, total lumen parcel, is total lumens per parcel shall not exceed blank lumens per square foot of a hardscape. Fixtures shall only be used in hardscape areas. So, you can't light your gardens, you can't light, what's the thinking there?
I think the original thinking was that we didn't want people to basically light all the way down through a develop, undeveloped part of their parcel, maybe down through a canyon. It might not be designated as ESHA. But we wanted to be able to keep people to a kind of a illumination bubble area. And we were thinking hardscape, I think it is defined in here too. We were toying with the definition of hardscape. Doesn't necessarily mean that you have to have, you know, concrete in the back, but it could also be, you know, DG back, back there or could be a garden area because that's considered development as well.
It kind of, the, the thinking is that, kind of like Pete was talking about in the beginning, that you use light where you need it, not necessarily just for decorative aesthetic purposes, lighting up stuff where people aren't going to be. So, the definition of hardscape in here is fairly broad, so, and it's, it's places that people would be using, you know, paths and gardens and patios and driveways and walkways and that type of outdoor space. So, that's, that's what it's geared toward, kind of the clustering idea that we have in our zoning code where, you know, you, you try to have all the development in one part of the lot instead of spreading out all over the place.
Yeah, well, I wouldn't argue with you, but gardens are not hardscape. And there are a lot of people who do have yards and like to use them for entertaining and to light them for the purposes of the parties. So, maybe you could make people come in and get a temporary use permit for that.
Well, the idea is, with the curfew for, for the residential is to certainly allow all that type of use for, you know, any place on a residential lot where somebody's using the property, that, you know, lighting would be allowed. And the idea is just not to have it on when nobody's using it.
The last one was to Jim. Did you find any lighting when we went out that excited your soul? You know, or what, what would you call out as kind of any areas which would be models for us to consider? Because, you know, you, you referred earlier to a good model of lighting. Can you give any kind of insight to that? And where anyone watching this in the future could go at a certain time to kind of get a sense?
I think I agree with the, the, the people who were turned in their surveys. I think the closest we came was Tranqus. There were aspects of Tranqus I truly liked. And I didn't do the lighting design. I, I sort of coached the lighting designer through it, but it was Alan Lebo's work. Where they got it right, they got it pretty right. It was comfortable, it was charming, it's, it's pleasant. I think he cut it a little tight on the, the back parking lots and things like that. And he didn't have to. I think he would have complied with his design had he done what he did in the main parking lot and the rest of the parking lots. And it would have been equally successful. But I think it, it created an atmosphere. And it's really, you know, it feels right. That's the good thing about, you know, good lighting. It feels right. You just walk through and say, I can see what I need to see, and, and it, it's pleasant. And you know, when you're walking through a parking lot that feels like you're in a, you know, a security zone, it doesn't feel pleasant. It doesn't have the, oh, I want to be here and having a good time. It's like, how quickly can I get into the building and get away from this? And if this, if this program is really successful, you'll find more of the former, the qualities that make, I think Tranqus successful, at least largely. And I think you'll find far less of the negative qualities we ran into last night.
Thank you. That was all chair.
Thank you very much. Skylar?
So I was going to follow up on, you know, the, the clarification where we have hardscape in there. I would definitely say that we need to be a little bit more clear about that. I definitely 100% agree with you, Jeff, on that. All right. So the, the compliance, we kind of talked about that. What properties other than a police station, maybe a fire station, would be considered for the LZ2 in the city? I know that there was a slide last night where we talked about applications where they were, but what are the ones that do exist that actually need to have lighting on all night long? A school needs to have lighting on all night long? For secu- why would a, I mean, I don't know why a school in a residential neighborhood has to have lighting on all night long, especially like, for example, the parking lot lights at the Point Doom School, which make zero sense to me when the gate is closed and locked at night.
This was a suggestion that Jim brought up to make sure that we weren't being overly restrictive if there were municipal needs or utility needs that we identified. We haven't specifically identified any yet. I don't know, I mean, we have, an example that comes to mind is the wastewater treatment plant. We haven't seen a lighting plan for that. We, we do have some provisions in there to allow for standard security lighting as long as it's the minimum needed and stuff like that.
But, but in an area like that, wouldn't you be better off using motion sensor lighting than using permanent security lighting?
Exactly. Right. So it's, we haven't specifically identified uses that would need that. It was just to allow for it if it, you know, not regulate out the possibility if it were to arise.
Jim?
Just as a, as a piece of information, Title 24, Part Six requires lights to be turned down after curfew automatically. There's a number of different ways you can go about it. You can use motion sensors, you can use fixed time devices, but you're required to dim or turn off lights after the curfew period by Title 24, schools and everywhere else. So lighting zone one, lighting zone two-
Wouldn't Title 24 apply to a new school?
Absolutely.
So are we building any new schools? We're doing a remodel of an existing school, but I don't think we're going to be building any new schools.
It, it doesn't matter. It applies to any remodeling, any modification of lighting, you're required to provide this. So you're going to get it everywhere for every facility that even, the smallest modification will invoke Title 24. That's in Part Six, Section 132 dot zero.
Thank you for clarifying that. So for everyone up here, is there, I mean, what do you guys think between 3,000 versus 2,700? I mean, the recommendation seems like 3,000 would be, it's a little bit cooler, not as warm or amber, but not, not everyone can see that as much. You're going to see a much bigger difference when you go from that to 5,000. But I, I would say that if the doctors were the ones that said 3,000 is the way to go, that, that probably gives us something to stick with that's wise.
If I could cut in-
2,700 looked great.
I have an additional slide that I found online. I don't exactly know where the source is, but I thought it was a good image for people.
Well, that's pretty accurate.
All right. So I, I think that we'll, I don't know. I was just putting that up to you guys as to what, what your, what your thoughts were on that.
Well, in, in the market, is there like a lack of availability of 2.7K or, you know?
I think it's a lot more available now than it was five years ago. I mean, clearly last night when we visited the Ralph Center, you saw the contrast of the, the more architectural lighting on the building that's meeting the 2,700K, it's LEDs. They changed out all the bulbs in the existing fixtures. They didn't change the entire fixtures, they changed out the bulbs. Now, they would have a challenge because the feel, the fixture isn't fully shielded, but the, the color temperature, I think, there was not anyone that I think was in the group of people last night that disagreed that one was far more, you know, preferable to the eye or pleasing to the eye than, than the other.
If the 2,700 is available, I mean, that, I'd go with that, right? That's, where do you want to head?
Norm, we're never going to stop. I'm just joking.
I don't, I mean, for myself, I know that I'm light sensitive. I walk around my house and I dim every light. So maybe, you know, my personal preference, I'm first to admit-
But dimming the light is not changing the color temperature of the light. Dimming the light is not changing the color temperature of the light. You could dim a 5,000K light.
Well, that doesn't feel right to me. I'd love to hear explanation.
One, one small point, with incandescent lighting with which we, most of us have lived throughout our lives, when you dim it, it does drop the color temperature. With an LED, it stays the same color, it just gets dimmer. So there, it's, our world is changing and that's one of the changes we're going to get used to. Just another point of fact is today I just got notification that all of the roadway lighting, street lighting, parking lot lighting being made by General Electric is now listing 2,700K as standard. So that is, that is a, I think, a, a good way of telling us how far we've gone, how quickly.
Microphone?
By the time we get this thing implemented, that may be, it may be more available, so.
Okay, so you listed it 3,000 and then you can come back to 2,700K as it's more available. Maybe it's, maybe it's 2,500, I don't know, 2,400. With the, how the streetlights are not regulated in this, streetlights, so you're talking about streetlights period, even if it was, I guess, there's not really a difference, for example, at like Westward Beach, when you go through the gate, that's a public road, but it's sort of a private road because you have to pay to drive through it because it's a park? So that's not a road technically? It's a driveway? It's a driveway light, it's not a road light? I just wanted to kind of be clear on that because I've, I've received a lot of complaints as a councilman in relation to the lights that are completely lighting up the beach at night. And then we are talking about doing like the restoration of the sand dunes and concerned about the snowy plover and where it's like Disneyland. So.
We'll, we'll look into that. I'm not, I don't, I'm not there at night in that area. I drive the other direction. So we'll make a point of checking that out and seeing how that would fit in here and, and what we can do with it.
Okay. And the holiday lighting, I know we talked about times, but maybe I didn't-
Thanksgiving, Thursday, January 50th.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura?
Thank you. I, I, I just want to start off by saying, I agree with a lot of what Jeff was saying. I think, you know, we're, we're looking at kind of a broader policy and enforcement. I have a lot of concerns about it. That being said, Skylar and I first heard this in Zuraesis and Pete, you came in and schooled us on this and, and really taught me a lot. So I, I did want to ask a couple of questions. Pete, maybe you could come up and answer. How many cities have this dark skies ordinance? Or a model lighting ordinance?
Okay, as far as, there really is no dark skies ordinance.
Okay.
Okay. How many, how many cities have lighting ordinances in place?
Well, have what we're looking to do.
This is, this is going to be on the, one of the most aggressive that we have as far as a municipality.
And, and also how many coastal cities do you know?
I can't give you that, that number.
Can you tell me about how many cities have done it or?
Well, I know that there are, we lost track, okay? There were, it was hundreds and-
So how are we more aggressive?
By the lighting zones, having zone one and zone two being a, a maybe forthcoming if dire need happens. So that's what, that's what's really amazing about this ordinance is that you've been very aggressive and being zone zero and one.
Okay. And then, oh, can you, and I don't know if Bonnie had a chance to ask you this, but did you bring the articles to demonstrate the medical implications? You talked about a number of things and I had asked for the medical articles to be able to get those?
Yeah.
We don't, we, we talked about where to find them and so we're, we're going to, they're available online, so we just haven't chased that down this afternoon, but we'll do that for you.
Okay, but don't you have them because you based all this circadian rhythm and all the other things? You don't have the articles?
And I don't, when you were talking about it, the AMA article?
No, I meant the articles that every, that-
Yeah.
So is this yours? Is this from you, the dark skies?
That's, that's one of our, the brochures, yeah, from IDA.
Yes, it is from us, yeah.
Okay, but you don't have the references for the medical articles?
I can get them for you. They're, they're scores and essentially they're URLs that I'd be getting them.
I, I just want to, I, thank you very much.
Sure.
I, I feel like I would be remiss not to bring up that, that I know that Mr. Benier was involved in a lawsuit against the city and which you're, you're, the group that you were working with lost against the city. And I know that a number of medical issues were brought up that the judge threw out and said there was no basis in them. And that's why I just want, I was concerned about seeing them again and the circadian rhythm was thrown out. So I just wanted to, to bring that up because I think it goes to a sense of credibility and, and the information that I, you know, just personally am looking at. So the other thing is, the, so the AMA articles and the, and in the journals, the medical journals, and then the, I think what's really cool is when you drive by Malibu, I mean, when you fly over Malibu, and I've done it a number of times at night, not, I mean, on a plane, on a, not a personal plane, on a big plane, you, the only thing you see in-
Oh, you have wings.
The only thing you see in Malibu, and I even only knew we were flying over Malibu, is you see Pepperdine. You don't see, you can't even tell where the road, where the land and the ocean begin and end. So I, I think we're very blessed here. And I was saying to Skylar and he goes, well, I, I want to see the, the stars. And I said, don't you see the stars? Of course, not on a night like tonight when the fog is, but I think we're really blessed here that we do get to see the stars more so than any other place. So I just, and I, I've been supportive of this from the very beginning, but I, I think that we really want to be careful. And some of it is what Jeff just mentioned about people do have, you know, they entertain outside or they like to sit outside and have dinner or whatever it is at night and they like to see, you know, their property, you know, down, it doesn't have to be up even though they look nice. Or something like, you know, people, a lot of people put the LED ropes on their trees. And so do they get to do that if they have a five acre property and no one else is going to see it? As opposed to the person that does it on their tree, you know, their palm trees in the entrance? I don't know. These are all just things to think about and like sensors and timers, I love that idea of all the new technology and that you can, and I just wonder how effective they've been in coastal areas. I know that we have a lot of sensors like on sprinklers and things like that that don't work as well here because of the ocean air. And so I just want to make sure if we're going to rely on that in some things that people don't think that, you know, it, it's going to be a, a big part of it.
Are you referring to a photo cell?
All of the different things like sensors and timers that you can work on your apps and things like that, because a lot of things work on, in other areas and also because of our topography. So I, I'm not saying not, I think it's great to have that.
No, I was just going to add that in, in my experience of being an electrician for my adult life, the, the, the photo controls work very well here, but they stop working when people's landscape over grows and they're sitting in the shade.
Right.
Very well. So that's, that's a maintenance issue.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And the aluminum light fixtures, the aluminum is not like an aircraft grade aluminum. Like a brand like Heavy Light makes a fixture that lasts very well out here, but if you go and buy an off-the-shelf cheaper light fixture that's aluminum, it just corrodes and the paint falls off and you have to replace it.
Or some of the timers too, also can-
The timers will work, will, will work and they will deteriorate with the salt air, but that's why most of the, the lighting transformers now are made of stainless steel that are used by the beach and they're enclosed and they seem to work for a very long time. And, you know, most of the timers now that are made by like a lighting company like Inermatic or I guess a switchgear company you may call them, would last very long. And the photo controls and the, the mechanical timers that have had problems with the salt air have now been replaced by, they offer digital things that have like astronomical clocks built into them where you don't have to go and reset your timer and they have a battery backup that when the power goes out, you're not running around your property resetting every mechanical time clock, which is, you know, a great business venture to being out here for a long time until different products were available, which I'm advocating for the better products because it's more efficient.
Right. Okay. So, sorry, a few other things that I had written down. So I, I just, I just want us to keep in mind as we're looking at this, you know, when I think of the rope lights or things like that, that I think one of the things we really prize in our community is kind of individuality and we don't have an architectural review board. Everything doesn't have to look the same. And so are we, and I don't know, I'm just bringing this up as something to discuss when we wind up, you know, at some further date, are we stifling that? Are we telling people that they can't do that? And, and certainly lighting is an art, not just in, inside lighting, but outside lighting too. So is there a way to get our needs met but not have it so, everybody looks the same, conforming in that way? And then, yeah, I, I think that, that we keep talking about commercial versus residential, but then there's also institutional. And so there, there is kind of a third one and I know a lot of things are regulated by the state when it comes to schools and that you don't necessarily, you might have somebody at a, working at a school, actually the, the janitors stay very late a lot of times because they have different shifts or you have at the high school, people doing, can I finish? Doing, working on a show and they might be there till two in the morning and they're not, they don't know how to turn the lights off. So probably motion sensors or something because you want to be really careful about security when you're talking about kids at a school and things like that. And then the, the rebates, I appreciate you bringing that up and I think that's important, but it's also, I don't want to speed up anything just so that I, I, I would leave it to businesses and stuff to be able to be smart enough to figure out when the rebates are going to go away. They're usually pretty good about that and, and not. And then also the, so we weren't exempting flagpoles? Is that what it was or?
We don't have that as an exemption currently.
Okay. That's, that's what I thought. Because then it would be a difference between, a lot of people have their own flagpole too as opposed to an institutional like the flagpole at, isn't there one at the college or at, I mean, at the, near the library and then the fire department? And there was one other one. And at this point, when you're putting up solar lighting, do you need, you don't need an electrical permit, right? If you're putting up, my understanding is if you're putting up solar like down a walkway or something-
You do not need an electrical permit.
You do not need it, right?
It's not line voltage.
Okay. That's what I thought. So that might be a little harder to, and I, I know we had discussed a lot about the timing and I felt pretty strongly and, and it's actually something I've heard from a few people and I'm sorry there's not more people and I think that's one, another thing we need to keep in mind that there's, we're not getting a whole lot of public input. That's why I asked how many people filled out the, and, and that's often because people don't really get involved until it's happening. And that's when they'll come out and complain or whatever, and that's just part of life. But kids do the same thing. But I think it's important for us to be aware of people that might have a bunch of lighting and to be asking them to saying, oh, you have to do it in the next year or two years or whatever it is. And that's why I had encouraged it longer time. And again, we could look at it that it's not urgent. We can- And again, we could look at it that it's not urgent. We can see the stars right now. It's not like, oh my gosh, no one can see the stars and we were able to, you know, a year ago. We want to make it better and, and better and better. But I think that we just need to be aware and aware of, of personal rights and property rights and timing for certain people. We have a lot of economic disparity in the city and I don't want to put any economic burdens on people right now. And maybe it's easier for people to do it more slowly, you know, a little bit over time. So that's just my comments, I think, for now. Thank you.
One quick comment if I may.
Sure.
Just, and, and, you know, Laura, you mentioned that we can see the stars today. I'll tell you, a couple of years ago, I went up to Petoskey and Charlevois, Michigan. And I'll tell you what, you want to see stars, go up there and take a look. This is nothing like what we have here. All right? And the closer we can get to that is, I think that's what we're trying to do here with this initiative. And that's going to require that we dim some lights that we currently are using. And I think, and my experience has been talking to people, is that there, there is a lot of support for having this happen. All right? I think, I've, I've not had anybody come up to me and say, "Jeez, I don't think this is a good idea." Now, they may not be here tonight, but like I said, you know, I've talked to a lot of people, been doing this for a long time. And I think we're going to get a lot of support in the community to make this happen.
I, I agree. And I'm not saying that I, you know, again, I was part in the beginning with Skylar on Zurecys about same thing when you go up to the mountains, you can go to Mammoth or different places and the, the stars or Tahoe are amazing. I don't know, I would love to get there. I don't know having LA right next door, we're ever going to be able to get there. But I, I, I wasn't saying that. I'm just aware of, I don't want to put burdens on, on people. And I also don't want to make us a cookie cutter community either. That's all. That's all. It's just concerns. I don't know how important they'll be or not.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
We have a comment from one of our experts.
All right. Go ahead.
Yes. I'd like to clarify as far as the source material for the biological studies of health impacts. The fastest way to find them, the ones that I would source, will be found in the source section of the AMA article. You will find all the works of Baske, Brainerd, the ones where circadian disruption is most definitely recognized, peer reviewed and not disputed. So you will find that, all the URLs, all the papers found on the AMA report. So that's the fastest way to find it.
Thank you, Pete. Great input from everyone. I, luckily for everyone here, most of my questions were already answered by everyone doing a thorough job. I want to say just a couple of things. Number one, I, I know it won't be part of this ordinance, but last night really showed me, it's been mentioned that I would, I would love to figure out a way to deal with, maybe it's more commercial, but inside light spill. That was really obvious last night. I mean, Sephora was, I mean, I don't even get it. It's horrifying to me. It's just a terrible look. It doesn't fit our rural community. And I don't know the answer, but dimmers after they closed.
I think, was it Pat? Did you mention the Windsor, Whizen Center? Have you driven over there at night?
Yeah.
Drive through there at night? They allow one light. You have to be careful. There's some security lighting that has to be able to be turned on at night.
Yeah, of course.
Not if it's emergency lighting and is only activated in the case of an emergency. But, you know, the shopping center is very dark at night there for, for good reason.
Right. And I understand the need, you know, having been a business owner for decades, I understand the need for security lighting. Don't disagree with that at all. Just there's, I don't think you could, Sephora is the example I'm picking on. That's nothing to a security lighting. It's just blasting blaring light that I don't think they're making a sale because of it or anything. It's just unconscious light. So I, I would...
It's supposed, it's supposed to make you look a certain way at night so you buy more makeup and stuff. Come on. If it's open, if it's closed, that's different.
And crash into one of our large trees or something.
You haven't been wearing makeup lately, Mike? You don't know about this?
I'm wearing it right now, but they helped me learn how to do a really good job. You don't even notice.
Um.
I, I think too, there was good points brought up on the time period to do all this. And I think it's important. I think whatever time period we go, I agree, we don't rush it to accomplish something and get it wrong. But I think we definitely should communicate to people potential advantages of doing it sooner minimally because of rebates. That would mean a lot to me personally. I, I'm, I'm driven by the word save money. That's one word in my vocabulary apparently. So I, I think that should be a big part of our marketing push on letting the residents know.
That could be that, yeah.
Right. But they don't know. And I mean, I literally don't know that either until I'm learning it here. So I think I'm not, I'm really not in the electric market for many products all the time, especially outdoor ones.
Chair, can I ask one question on that?
Um, sure.
Yeah. Just, once this code goes into effect, even if it's got a five-year window, are, are these rules enforceable immediately? So like, for example, if someone does have a problem neighbor who's got 8,000 Kelvin?
No.
Okay.
Not until it sunsets.
Yeah, not until it goes through.
Except for new.
Except for new.
Except for new.
Right. And I can see where, I don't know if it's done or if it makes sense, but could there be a hardship? You could come ask for one. I don't know how you'd ask. Come to the planning department and state your case.
I wanted to, I wanted to mention one thing too, that this wouldn't work for every type of compliance issue, but one interim solution is just to turn off the lighting that doesn't comply. So, you know, if it's superfluous and, and it's not something that's totally necessary, then you can just turn it off until you're ready to change that fixture, depending on what type. It's not going to work for everything, obviously, but it's just something to be aware of.
An option in some cases, wall lighting that doesn't do anything other than light a wall or something like that. Yeah, I get it. So overall, I, I'm just going to share a memory related to this. Growing up, I grew up on, near the beach up by Ensonal. And so this is in the mid, late 60s. My, my dad got a piece of plywood. We went outside and he used very clever things and he set up so we could put this piece of plywood in the same place every time. And then he had a scope of some sort that would go in the same place on the plywood every time. So we would go outside when he was around, which actually wasn't that often, but we'd go out there and we would see things in the sky. And I remember how incredibly clear it was. And I remember seeing the, the rings of Saturn. I remember seeing a moon of another planet, probably Saturn as well. I was pretty young. That was really cool. And, and I'd forgotten until last night really and then listening to this. And I know that the spill from the city of LA is a big contributor there, but just how incredibly clear it used to be. And your point about Montana or wherever it was, unbelievable. So overall, I'm, I'm very proud to be a part of a city and a process that is taking this seriously and looking at it. And I think it's great and I appreciate everyone's help and...
Except today, Mike, he wouldn't be able to put up that platform because he'd need a permit.
Yeah.
Just a piece of plywood lying on the ground. That's all it was.
One other question that I, and I'm sorry to hold you up, but it, it's on this applicability section. The, the C part of it about, are you trying to say that, that any outdoor lighting fixtures anywhere in the city that can be turned down have to immediately be turned down regardless of where they are, on what kind of property? I, I, it's just confusing that you put that section in there without qualifying it as just trying to direct as to who you're, who you're after there.
So the idea with that section is that some, for the type of lighting fixtures like floodlights and things like that, that you can aim that are adjustable, that upon adoption and this, this becoming effective, that those would immediately be pointed downward so that they're not causing light spill and, and sky glow and, and all of that stuff. That, that's the idea. That the thing, something like that that you could fix right away, that that just be adjusted right away.
And that would apply to everybody throughout the city?
Mm-hmm.
Okey dokey.
One other one? Sorry.
And the tag alongs? What do you got?
Yeah, yeah. My bad. And I know it came up a few times about the lights in the residential area, like not in your hardscape. That's Section 050B3. What if instead of saying fixtures, what if we remove the line saying fixtures shall only be used in hardscape and just said instead, "And blank lumens per square foot on non-hardscape with a height not to exceed Z," you know, instead of 18 feet, maybe at six or something. Just so there, you know, we don't have kind of cookie cutter, that concept. We, we could allow, you know, that lighting in some form?
We, we could do that. We could eliminate altogether that last sentence about only using it in hardscape if, you know, if, if everybody's more comfortable with that. We can look at ways to make sure that that's more flexible.
Or maybe not hardscape, just in kind of usable or, or, you know, that kind of takes away if somebody's got like this, a gully or this or the, you know, it's really not usable. It's just a part of your property. And yeah, it would be beautiful to light it up. And it is very pretty, but it's really, that's what we're trying to, you know, get away from. So...
Usable spaces.
Okay. Do we have any last comments from up here or from staff for tonight?
You guys did great. I mean, what a hell of a job. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
We adjourn.
Yep. Meeting is adjourned then. Thank you.